Well, good evening. It is Tuesday, July ninth. It's seven o'clock and we are in the council chambers in the city of Platteville. And I will call the meeting of the common councils to order. We'll start with roll call.
Barbara Stockhausen has excused Sina Sharp.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Robin Klein.
Here.
Isaac Shanley.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
We'll start this evening's meeting with a special presentation. Paige Smith, the Vice Chancellor for Administrative Services at UW-Platteville, is here to share an update on their strategic plan. So, yep.
Well, good evening, President Doss and City Council members. My name is Paige Smith. I'm Vice Chancellor for Administrative Services at UW-Platteville. I've been here approximately since April of 2018. So, many know me as the former Rob Kramer. I take that title very, very sensitively and favorably, since I know he spent many a time here in this chamber and has done so much for the university and now a UW system. I wanted to take some time to talk with you this evening to give you an update on our strategic planning process. First, I have to give a big shout out to Victoria Livingston. Victoria is the Director of Assessment for UW-Platteville. She, in fact, was responsible for all of the work and efforts and organization and scheduling behind this process, which we've been engaged in for the last year to determine what our 2019 through 2024 strategic plan will look like. So, with that, I have a short presentation to walk through with you. First, as you know, one of our mottos is being an opportunity from the start. For over 150 years, Platteville has served as an educational leader and economic stimulus for the southwest Wisconsin region. And as we've continued to grow and evolved, we are developing new understandings of who we are. Many, many times in the last year to two years, what I've heard on the campus, our faculty, staff, and students saying, you know, in this day and age, there's so many changes happening in higher education and so many challenges and struggles with either financial aid or state support, federal regulations, the change in which society now values higher education. And we have continuously been engaged in learning and researching and attempting to identify the ways in which we can continue to grow as an institution and ensure that whoever we do define ourselves as and what we offer to the community, to the region and the state and beyond, is in fact going to allow us to succeed and grow for our students. One of the ways in which we've done that, UW System in 2017 decided to integrate the 13 two-year colleges within the UW System and basically provide them within some regional, or I'm sorry, receiving institutions authority. So, for UW-Platteville, two of the branch campuses that were basically Bear Bousaw County Campus and the Richland Campus became a part of UW-Platteville's authority. So Chancellor Dennis Shields is now oversees not only UW-Platteville campus, but also those two branch campuses. And that has become a part of our identity as well. As many of you know, UW-Richland actually started out as a UW-Platteville school. So, it was really neat to go back into that community and talk about the fact that our roots, in fact, were together at one point in time. So, that's an exciting way in which we have expanded our footprint. We're continuing to work with other branch campuses and provide access to ongoing students in those communities as well. So, what are we doing with the strategic plan? Well, we are in the development stage. And as a part of the development, we started last fall in determining, basically charting out the year's schedule as to how we would go about developing this next plan. One of the things that we did right away was identified many of the main themes in which we see not only UW-Platteville, but our branch campuses needing some identification in the plan and how we believe we need to address these issues. One that was a resounding theme was student success. As you know, we've had enrollment challenges in the last few years and we have put a lot of time and effort into determining how to increase our enrollment, how to increase our student retention, and how to ensure that our students graduate and are successful in their future endeavors. That's not only, again, the Platteville campus, but also the branch campuses. Academic experience. As you know, again, our academic programs are many of the reasons that our students come to our campus. And that includes providing those type of academic programs that students want and need these days in order to go out and be able to be productive in the workforce. And that has changed. You know, 10 years ago, we were much stronger in liberal arts. As you know, in this day and age, we talk much more about healthcare needs. We talk a lot about the industry needs and the needs of engineering programs, which falls right in line with the type of programs that we want to offer and continue to expand and grow in. Campus climate. We want to be sure that we are accessible to all, that we provide an equitable experience so that we can ensure that all students feel welcomed and inclusive, including faculty and staff on our campus. And there are many ways in which we continue to develop programs and opportunities to do that. Fiscal planning is obviously a big one. That's one area that falls within my responsibility to ensure that we are budgeting properly, that we're planning properly, and that we're investing funds that we do have in the way that's going to push these efforts forward. And that's been, that's a weekly conversation that we have as leadership on campus. And finally, community and corporate partnerships became a theme as well. As you know, we have a foundation. Both branch campuses also have foundations. We have a number of relationships with corporate partnerships and employers in the area that we are continuing to seek additional partnership and relationships with to provide more opportunities for our students through internships, through scholarships, through fellowships for employees and faculty in order to ensure that we are working together and that they come sooner to the table than later so that our students have a very easy pipeline from graduation into the workforce. So, those are the main themes that came out in the beginning. And that was really developed from the executive team, looking at the research, looking at, again, the higher education challenges, the things that we know we need to really focus on going forward. In the process, we basically developed four phases. This, again, has been occurring throughout the year since September of last year. The first phase was preparation. Again, we identified the five main themes. And then we started completing data-informed situational analyses, which basically was getting a lot of campus community members together and asking, what are we in fact doing now? So, let's decide where we are now, what we're doing now, so we know what we need to change and do differently to continue to move forward. Phase two was the strategy brainstorming session. This was the most exciting session. And I have a slide on the engagement that we saw across the university campus community. That occurred in January and February. This was where there was a great deal of brainstorming, a lot of tables full of a lot of people with a lot of ideas to talk about. Again, what are our strategies? What are our goals? Who are we? What do we, who do we want to be? And we solicited input from the campus community throughout numerous sessions and ways in which they could provide input. Phase three was the strategy prioritization. So, as we have continued to incur all of this data and feedback, which has all been extremely valuable, we now came into the time of putting it all together to attempt to identify main goals and themes that could start to develop the actual written plan. So, we've been doing that in the last spring and identifying sort of the top level strategies in which we will attempt to incorporate into the plan. And we're in the final stages of the plan. So, planned Phase Four, which has been going on throughout the summer. We have developed our performance targets. We're continuing to identify the structures and resources that we will need to implement. We're continuing to identify what many call KPIs to determine, okay, if these are our main goals and strategies and objectives, what do we need to do and what do we need to measure in order to ensure that we're going to meet those over the next five years? So, I just want to mention that during Phase Two, one of the most exciting parts of this for the campus was to see how engaged the university community was. And this includes, again, both the Platteville community and also the branch campuses, because we went to all three locations throughout this time period to ensure that everyone had an opportunity to engage. We had 10 full engagement sessions, which were four hours in length each, where we just invited the entire campus community to come sit and vet through these topics and provide us with feedback. We had a total of 226 individuals attend within those 10 engagement sessions. 12% of those individuals were students. The students were actively engaged and provided so much really valuable input and experience as to what they saw we were doing well and what they would like to see us continue to do for not only their success, but the success of the institution. We did an online survey to where anyone could go on the main webpage that Victoria had created, which was, in my opinion, again, phenomenal. So, she provided all this information on the website so someone could go to that site, find out exactly what we had done, what was the updated documents, and then provide any type of feedback online. We had 313 responses that were submitted to that feedback in addition to the other in-person engagement sessions. And then the last stage, we did poster sessions, where we came up and basically said, now we've identified the goals in this way, continue to give us input and feedback through writing on the posters. We did that all across campus and, again, continued to receive feedback. And then, the last few weeks, I have been engaged in setting up work groups and with the exec team to say, here's where, here's all the data that we have and here's the feedback. Let's get it down to an identifiable plan that not only we understand as a campus community, because there were some themes and some goals that were written that when I and others read it, I said, I'm not, it sounds wonderful, but I'm not sure what it means. So, now we're attempting to wordsmith it in a way that it's clearly going to align us and move us forward. So, this is where we've gotten. Through the variety of work that's been done, this is our introduction statement that starts out and then leads into our three goals that we have defined to this point. This is our strategic plan that has its foundation and our commitment to serve as an active collaborative stewards of place. To do this, we must serve as an integral member of our communities and leverage southwest Wisconsin's unique characteristics to, first of all, foster transformative education. So, fostering transformative education means that we're going to create a community that values and supports all members in their pursuit of lifelong learning. And many of the ways in which we are doing that, and as we're developing our objectives under this main goal, we are building our curricular strengths. So, we're continuously engaging in additional academic programming. We're looking at those programs that, in fact, have not been successful to be sure that we are, in fact, providing funding to those that are continuing to see student success and growth versus those that may no longer have the type of interest or student enrollment that we need to continue to move ahead. We're providing inclusive education. We have really expanded on our diversity efforts in education and providing additional programming across campus to, again, ensure that all students feel welcome. We are supporting student successes by providing, again, additional internships, partnerships with corporate communities to reach out to employers early and often and ask for their support to come into our programs and say, how can you continue to work with us to ensure that what you need in your employment is, in fact, what we can continue to provide as far as the students that graduate from UW-Platteville and its branch campuses? We're also expanding the method of our deliveries. So, one of the areas that we're seeing in higher education change is that traditional students not only are changing in the way that they're seeking higher education, but they are seeking different modes of delivery. So, many institutions are providing more of a hybrid education versus that classroom type of environment. So, we're expanding our distance learning programs and our online programs as well for our on-campus programs. We're also looking very closely at our non-traditional learners and adult learners and ensuring that we are providing them the opportunities as well, because that has been noted for higher education experts that that will be a continued growth of students who will continue to see enrollment as they need additional opportunities to come and either complete their degree in order to move into a different field or different workforce. So, that's Goal One at this point. Goal Two, we want to recruit tomorrow's leaders. And as I said, that's, that, those words alone could mean many things, right? So, what we're attempting to do is, again, identify exactly, based on the input, what that theme will, that goal will accomplish. Currently, our definition of that is to increase access to support prospective students' pursuits of their personal and professional goals. Many of the ways that we've talked about doing this would be, first of all, increasing access to an affordable education. If there's one thing that UW-Platteville prides itself on is that it is an accessible institution, that we find ways to ensure that we are bringing students in, not turning students away. We want to reduce the barriers that would prevent a student who otherwise would be very successful and have opportunities to ensure that they are coming to UW-Platteville and that when they get there, they're successful and at the branch campuses. We're also putting a lot of investment and interest into expanding our recruitment outreach, because we've hired some consultants who've come in and said, you know what? In the communities that you're in, you're actually, you have a very strong return. When you reach out to those communities and those regions, they come to Platteville. So, how can we continue to enhance and increase our student recruiters, increase our student advisors to reach out into those regions and communities and even different states to pull in and, again, and expand our enrollment and recruitment efforts? We have obviously looked very closely at the merit-based and need-based support that we can provide students. And the chancellor has instructed us to invest. Last year, we invested $450,000 toward ensuring that students who may have lost financial aid due to the Pell Grant changes, that they, in fact, now have an opportunity to come to school. He has our enrollment and student success division look closely at almost every student. So, we know which students may not have re-enrolled in the spring because they might have still had a $500 balance on their account and they felt like they just couldn't pay it, so they couldn't return. We've done a significant amount of outreach in order to ensure that those students know that there are opportunities and we'll do whatever we can to assist in being sure that they stay in school. So, those are some of the ways that we're recruiting tomorrow's leaders. And finally, Goal Three is investing in our future. This is through to the development, or I'm sorry, delivery of operational excellence through innovative investments and strategic use of resources. So, this one falls in sort of not only the personal investments that we're making, but also the investments we're making in our resources on our campuses. This includes some of the efforts that we want to continue to seek out in regard to sustainability, to expanding our footprint and ensuring that we are doing what we can to move forward with renewable energy. We would like to see as one of the tactics and targets under this goal, there's been a lot of discussion on becoming 100% reliable on electrical energy through renewable resources and then just the next three to five years, which would be something that our experts and our sustainability committees on campus are saying, in fact, is something that we could accomplish. We just have to be focused on how to do it and ensure that we are taking those steps to do so. We have taken efforts and continue to work toward becoming LEED certified in, for example, our Sesquicentennial Building that's in the design stage to ensure that that building, which is going to be a living, learning lab for our students, is also meeting that sustainability pursuit and focus that our students seek, not only now, but in the future. We're looking into wind turbines on campus and solar panels. So, this has become, again, an area that we will continue to seek out innovative ways to invest in the security of renewable energy for our campus. We also done a significant amount of outreach to our regional leaders, industries, and K-12 schools. The chancellor feels very strongly that we can do a lot more to continue to assist in our rural communities and help those students in K-12 to ensure that they are aware of and receiving the type of support and needs to come in and come to higher education through UW-Platteville and the branch campuses. And finally, we are looking very strongly into our marketing office and the ways in which we are actually letting others in the community and across the state and across the country and the world know that we're here. What we also learned is that our website, the information we're sharing, was really only reaching so many. And when it did reach so many, they didn't stick around long. And I'm not a techie, so I was amazed to know that they could tell how many clicks through somebody makes before they leave your website and which pages they visit. So, we have our staff on campus who are looking very closely at that. That's going to be an initiative to be sure that we are data-driven and looking very closely at the analytics to ensure that we are marketing ourselves and really showing who we are out in the internet world so that the prospective students and parents and employees know who we are and hopefully we will continue to attract in that way. So, those are the three main goals that we've come up with. Again, the next stage for this is, within the next month, we will be continuously talking about objectives. We'll be identifying targets to ensure that we can reach those objectives and goals under those main three themes. And that's the next stage as we continue to move forward. We will be finalizing this to be in place and ready to be publicized by the start of this semester. We believe we're on track to do so. And we're very excited about the opportunity to start to really talk about the full plan and to have the opportunity to work with the community, to work with the campuses, and to work with the students to share what our vision is and ensure that we're moving ourselves forward successfully. But this is a different approach. So, we were talking to a community member last week and they asked about our former strategic plan. So, can we talk about the 2013 to 2018 plan? And the chancellor and I both looked at each other and said, well, we really haven't looked at it in the last year because we've been in the process of actually, you know, looking at our new plan. And he said, well, what's going to be different? So, why wouldn't you be familiar with that plan? And the chancellor said, because that was in the time when we were doing a plan, we felt really good about getting it completed, and then we put it on a shelf. And we never really made it a living, learning part of our daily decision-making. And so, this is going to be different. He will be directing the exec team, directing the vice chancellors, making us all accountable to ensure that we are taking this plan and we're incorporating it into our decisions on a daily basis. More importantly, we're setting up proper measurements that where every six months, we will review what we've done. We'll review the goals and objectives and determine if we're meeting them. And if not, what do we need to be doing to change it to be sure that we're investing in the right ways to be successful? So, that's the approach that we're going to take. And this is something that's not new to many, but something that for higher education, and I've been involved in a few strategic plans in my last few years. It was common to where the plan would be looked at a few times, but not really incorporated into the entire university community on a regular basis. So, this plan is looking to the future. We're very excited about our future. We have been excited about it. We feel like we've continued to reach many of our goals. The plan doesn't automatically mean that we're going to be successful or fail, but it definitely gives us a road, a path forward, a way in which we know these are the things that we need to do in order to continue to grow. So, that's my allegedly brief update. I could talk about this much longer, but I will not bore you any longer. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Does any council member have a question?
I have a question about something different. In about 2010, a group was hired to make up a plan for the campus. One of the things that was suggested was to remove Pioneer Tower. Are you familiar with this plan at all?
I'm not. I apologize. That was before my time.
I know it's before your time. Just kind of wondering if it's on a shelf or somebody's working with it or nothing happening or what?
So, there, from what I know as far as our budget planning for our capital projects, it's currently not in our planning project for the next five years. Now, that doesn't mean it won't be in at some point. But we have been focusing on some of the maintenance issues that we've had on the academic buildings. We've redone some of the library foundation work in the patio that was cracking and crumbling. We have put a lot of effort and sought commitment from the state to work on our Babel Hall renovations to ensure that we're providing new lab space and ways in which we can continue to support our chemistry and other science programs. And the biggest one that we're working on regularly, in fact, there was a two-day meeting this week alone, which happens regularly, is the Sesquicentennial Building, our new engineering building that will be attached to Engineering Hall. We, as, if you've been watching the news and with the state's budget and all of the discussion going back and forth, one of the areas that we continue to seek more support in is for our all-agency budget to help pay for some of the projects that we need to address. And I'm sure Pioneer Tower continues to be on somebody's list. In fact, I'm sure Pete Davis would say yes. He's in total agreement. But we've just had to prioritize because we know that our chances of really getting any type of approval to move forward is always something that we can't take for granted.
I heard a rumor. And the rumor was that the campus was building storage for fuel oil in case there was a lack of natural gas.
That's actually true. We are doing an upgrade for our fuel oil storage facility. And that's something that DOA has basically done for us. The state has said this is what the campus are going to start doing differently. And so, that project was automatically required by the state. That wasn't one of our top priorities.
And that wasn't a rumor.
Well, I just want to find out.
Yes, and in fact, it's in progress. They're digging right now. And that happened quickly. But yes, that was something that DOA is doing for all of the UW institutions across. They have a plan to get everyone to that place so that we can ensure that we are covered when and if a disaster would occur.
It's going to be backup.
Yes.
So, we've gone from coal on the campus to...
Natural gas to fuel oil.
To fuel oil.
I don't think we're going to lose natural gas. We're hoping to, you know, re-establish any type of coal to some point to no longer be relying on that, obviously. But the fuel, again, I think is at one stage of ensuring that we're going to be in a good place and be able to still stay open if, in fact, something would happen, especially with the cold winters. Any other questions?
Other questions of Paige? Thank you very much for the presentation. And we'll look forward to the final plan. And perhaps you'll share a copy not only with the city, but we would encourage you also to put it in our public library.
Absolutely. In fact, I think Karen and I already talked about being able to have it published as well through the city's newsletters and paper as well. And so, again, look for that in late August. I'll be back in touch and we'll be ready to move forward. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on along the agenda. The next item on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you prefer separate discussion or action on any item. We'll start with council minutes from June 25th. Payment of bills, the financial report for June. There are no appointments to boards or commissions tonight. There are licenses, one- and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. There's a run-walk permit for Saturday, September 21st, for Ben's Hope Awareness. And there's a street closing request for Division Street to Bradford Street for the 31st Annual Division Street Neighbor's Picnic. And finally, the Grant County Highway Construction Aids. This is our regular, set this aside, but then eventually get it back. So, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve all the items listed under the consent calendar.
Second. We have a motion by Isaac Shanley, seconded by Eileen Nichols, to approve the consent calendar as published. We'll vote. Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is citizens' observations, comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I do not believe I have anybody who's registered, so I don't believe we have anybody who's wanting to speak. So, we'll move along to reports, board, commission, and committee minutes. Historic Preservation Commission, Counselor Killian?
No addition.
Okay, other reports are in the packet, water and sewer financial reports, airport financial report, and department progress reports. Anybody with questions on any of those?
I have a question about the library. Maybe somebody can answer that.
Was it in the report from the library?
It's in, it's in the second page of the library report. And it talks about, "Due to increased usage of natural gas this past winter, Allied Energy has transitioned our account to a new customer category, which will result in higher costs for heating next year." Can anybody explain that?
I can. This was in the library board minutes, is that what you said? Yeah. So, just given the volume that they're using in the newer building, they are at a different level.
Because of the volume going up, they're going to go on a higher cost per unit?
Yes, I believe so.
Is that because the library is a commercial building?
It's just the size, yeah. I mean, can we look into that anymore? I don't know that it's a negotiable conversation. I think that that's, sorry, I'm looking at you, Karen.
Sure, I'm happy to touch base with Jesse and provide more detail on that.
Yeah, I mean, I did ask at the board meeting and it was just, as far as I understood, just the volume, given the size of the building, puts us in that category and there's no way around it. But it wouldn't hurt to have another person ask.
Is up if the building...
Going up because the volume is going up.
If you can afford to use more, you can afford to pay more, I think. The logic maybe, I don't know.[1770.61]
We'll, we'll confirm.
Okay.
Any other questions? The airport commission wasn't on the reports tonight, but I will mention that this Sunday is the annual pancake breakfast at the airport. So I believe it starts at seven and serves until, I guess, probably about 12. So pancake breakfast, good breakfast, in co- in cooperation with the local Boy Scouts. Okay, we'll move on to action items. The first action item, Ordnance 1902, amending the official traffic map to add yield signs on West Adams Street and Short Street. And we'll start with staff. Howard?
Yes. In the past, this intersection had been left unregulated. There had been extremely low traffic on both. Under Wisconsin law, it's an unregulated intersection. So if two vehicles approach the intersection, the vehicle to the right has the right-of-way. Due to the additional developments at the end of West Adams Street, staff believes that there will be enough additional traffic that there will be the potential for more conflicts. So we feel that directing which vehicle has right-of-way will minimize that. Since West Adams Street dead ends at the far west end and then intersects with State Highway 81, we feel that, that that would be the most appropriate place to put a yield sign. And placing stop signs would probably just add to frustration. You, you go, you stop, you go, you stop before you get anywhere. So yield, and so in case somebody's coming, then you can decide to do that. So we're proposing that we install yield signs on West Adams Street at Short Street.
So the right-of-way belongs to Short Street?
Correct.
Questions?
I don't have any questions. And I would move to approve Ordnance 1906, amending the official traffic map to install yield signs on West Adams Street at Short Street.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Ordnance 1906, amending the official traffic map and installing yield signs on West Adams Street at Short. We'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next is Ordnance 1907, amending the official traffic map to add yield signs on Laura Street at Ellen Street. Howard?
Similar case here. Laura Street has a dead end and then it intersects with Ellen Street. What we're doing is recommending yield signs on, on Laura Street at Ellen, giving right-of-way to people on Ellen Street. We do have, we did have one email comment from Mr. Delahanti. I forwarded that by email and have a copy of that in front of you. The two biggest things that he, he was talking about was making sure that if we put any signs on, that we attach the new signs to an existing street pole. And that, I assured him, we would do. He prefers stop instead of yield because of fences by an adjoining owner. I don't know that it makes much difference. The only other indication is he also agrees that the west side of the intersection, there's a little bit of a hill and sometimes that that's had a little bit of issues in winter. So requiring them to stop coming up that slight grade may give them problems starting again. But my proposal would be yield signs.
Questions, comments? Do I hear any council action?
Again, I have no questions. And I think trying the yield signs would be a good start. If it, if it's a problem, then we could probably come back and do something with stop signs. But I would move to approve Ordnance 1907, amending the official traffic map to install yield signs on Laura Street at Ellen Street.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen, seconded by Isaac, to approve Ordnance 1907, amending the official traffic ma- mapping and adding yield signs on Laura Street. We'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next we have, assign night. Next we have Ordnance 1908, amending the official traffic map to create one-way, a one-way Bonson Street between Furnace Street and Market Street. So we'll start with staff presentation.
Okay. We have, we've had concerns by citizens because of multiple crashes at the intersection of Bonson and Furnace Streets. Since 2011, there have been 10 crashes resulting in seven injuries. As comparison, for the other three intersections combined, with probably more than twice the amount of traffic, there have been fewer crashes and about the same number of injuries. One of them, one crash alone resulted in five of the injuries. So this one intersection has had more crashes and nearly as many injuries as the other three combined. And the major contributing factor is that there is very poor sight distance for vehicles northbound on Bonson to see around the church building. So staff proposal is to make Bonson Street one-way, southbound only from Furnace to Market. That would eliminate having a person northbound trying to see around the church. What it would do is it would direct traffic northbound on Bonson to turn left onto Market and require them to go to Chestnut Street. There are a couple of private parking lots, former streets that were vacated many years ago. Many people are, are looking at those as possible cut-throughs. And those are also pretty much one-way, southbound already. And they're actually private, it's private property is what it is, private parking lots. So those are, that's one of the concerns that people has is what to do about that. Since it's private, private owners can take actions to post signage or do whatever unless the council directs me otherwise. But one of the things that I'm looking at here is if we put Bonson Street a one-way, southbound, it would allow us to put three or four angle parking stalls onto the east side of Bonson Street, next to the CenturyLink parking lot, so that when people come into Bonson off of Furnace, they could do angle parking there, to their left as they're coming down that street. That would be a visual clue for people who are going northbound on Bonson that you can't go that way. In the future, we could have landscaping and other things to provide additional clues for drivers. One of the downsides, as noted in many places, including at the council meeting last time, is that it would add another one-way street in the downtown. And it can in fact confuse and frustrate people while doing that. The obvious pro on that is that it would reduce crashes. So we've had preliminary discussions with the congregational church, with CenturyLink and Main Street Program. They're generally in favor of making Bonson Street one-way, southbound. CenturyLink is concerned about people cutting through their parking lot and they've, they've allowed, they said that they are not opposed to eliminating this driveway. The church has also said that if angle parking is installed, that they would ask that at least one stall be designated as a handicap parking stall because that would be an easy access to their handicapped entrance to the church. Staff is proposing that council approve this to make Bonson Street one-way.
Okay, questions of staff? Otherwise, we do have someone who has registered to speak for informational purposes only. Mr. Kloster?
Bill Kloster residing at 975 Highbury Circle in Platteville. Tonight, I'm here representing the two owners of 190 Market Street and 150 Market Street. Both these buildings, as Howard mentioned earlier, have a vacated street between the buildings that is a private parking place. However, there's a lot of confusion right now with, with that because that private parking lot has a stop sign at the end of it and it also has a street name. And I'm speaking about the one between 150 and 190 Market Street. And the, the owners are just wanting to get that cleaned up. We don't feel that it's the owner's responsibility to, to move, remove a stop sign and a street name sign. We, the owners do realize they have responsibility to put up any signage that would indicate it's a private parking lot. And all we're doing is looking to the city for suggestions or recommendations on what that signage, what the appropriate signage would be for that, that instance.
So you didn't really speak to Bonson Street, but to the parking issues?
Whether, whether Bonson Street is made one-way or not, it's irrelevant. This problem exists. I think if Bonson becomes one-way, as Howard mentioned in his discussion, people will be seeking other alternate routes. Like water, people follow the least path of resistance. And so they'll either go through the church or they'll go through that other parking lot, whichever is quick and easy to get through.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Can we?
Questions?
Well, are they considering closing somehow, making a barricade so that, that where the stop sign is, it goes into Mineral Street, is it?
Right.
So that they can't exit the parking lot there, so people can't enter the parking lot?
No, there's no desire to put up a barrier because that would disrupt the flow of parking. And there's no way to park in there and then turn around and go back out to Furnace Street. You have to come in, angle park, and go out onto Market Street. It's, it's a one, it should be a one-way parking lot to the south. And right now, it's used as a open street both ways. Traffic goes up and down it.
You have any suggestion as to signage?
That's what we're looking to the, the city for signage because what traffic regulations, what is most appropriate to support traffic regulations and known things?
Thank you for bringing that to our attention and we will refer that to staff. Let's move back to the ordinance under discussion. And I understand the relationship in terms of, will creating a one-way street on Bonson Street between Furnace and Market exacerbate a problem that might exist for two parking lots further west? One between the church and the, and the church auxiliary building and one between 150 and 190 Market Street? We can have staff. But let's go back to the discussion of the one-way proposal for Bonson Street.
Is the landscaping a positive? Or just talking about and may not be done?
My recommendation at this point is that we would, that I would recommend it, a budget figure for the 2020 budget. And that's, that would be part of the budgeting discussion, whether or not you wanted to include anything like that.
So you, you didn't put it into the motion, the possible motion?
I did not.
What type of cost would you be looking at for possibly for the landscaping? The curb closure in a CenturyLink, as well as the additional signage?
I'm thinking less than 10,000 for all of it.
And the curb closure on Bonson Street would be our responsibility because we're requesting it? It would not have any, I mean, CenturyLink would not have to partner or be a part of that?
They wouldn't have to. I felt that it would be a minimal cost as included in that figure that I just provided. It could be done at the same time as, as any other landscaping or other curbing that we might do.
I personally feel that without the curb closure and without some kind of barrier, that, that really won't be a one-way street. And, I mean, unless there's something parked in the way, I'm just fearful that that just really will not be a one-way street. Any other council members who have? Otherwise, I did have another person register to speak.
Yes, my name is Jack Ledke. I'm the executive director for the Platteville Main Street Program. And as Howard had indicated, we did have a discussion about changing this to a one-way link. And I understand the concerns of the citizenry with a lot of one-way streets in the downtown area. But I think in this case, it has been expressed to me and I've had some personal experience with. This is a very, very dangerous intersection. The church certainly cannot be moved. You have to be out in the lane with the front of your car before you can see anywhere up the street. And as people turn off of Chestnut and come down the street, they are already accelerating and they are on top of you before you have a chance to even back up, if you can back up. If you stay out in the lane and they swerve out to go around you, they're going in the other lane where cars coming up Furnace could interact with them. I've had personal experiences there where I've had to back up because they are on top of you right of way. I also know that the last major accident there, that Howard indicated where five people were injured, those folks could reasonably have been seriously hurt. Fortunately, they were minor injuries. But I think this is one case where the one-way street makes a lot of sense. And I would say that people coming up Bonson Street from the Main Street area and having to turn to go to Chestnut, I think they will go all the way to Chestnut to get out or they will go around the park and go back onto Main Street. It's not as challenging as it may seem to get to Furnace, to get out of town if that's where they're going to go or to get to the north side. There are bigger challenges in the city for movement around our community. I live on the north side and I'd love to be able to go to the stores on the east side from time to time, or my bank, and not have to come all the way downtown to do that. So there are challenges, but we have to live with those as we have to live with the narrow streets downtown that we all wish were wider and, and more easily traversed. So I would recommend to you that you do make that a one-way block. And if it requires some negotiations with CenturyLink, I think that could be overcome. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? The way I understand it, the adoption of the ordinance will not include the curb closure, nor will it include any barrier to show to, any landscaping at this time. So it'll basically include a one-way, a sign that says, "Do not enter," one-way?
Correct.
I guess I look at is if you're coming from, if you're from, going south from Furnace Street. I guess I look at it as if you're coming from, if you're from, going south from Furnace Street, and all of a sudden you've got these three angled parking spots or four stalls, and one of those cars is backing up out of their stall, and you take a right turn south, and all of a sudden you're stuck at a turn there, and then the vehicle behind you is kind of the same things here, you add an additional stoppage or additional traffic right at that stop. I understand that we've had some incidents the last few years here. But if you also look into stuff that Howard gave you for 2017 on Second Furnace Street, in one year, there was five injuries there. So this could be an anomaly that so far right now this year, this is happening. If you look at last year, there was, you know, a couple, in 2017, there was one that included a bike. I guess I'm actually, I'm in favor of leaving it as it is. I think you're creating more problems by changing it to one way, not on an everyday basis, but especially if you have, one of it is Sunday and church is going on, and you have four cars that are trying to back up, and you have somebody that's trying to go south, you're going to be backing it up onto Furnace Street. If there was a motion made, I'd like to see the motion made to include the curb and gutter put on for the Century Link, as well as for the landscaping. If you're going to do it, you might as well do it all at one.
I concur with Isaac's concern about putting three parking spaces. I thought the same thing. Somebody backing up and going south is liable to back into somebody turning by the church going south. So I'm not comfortable with three parking spaces. I don't know, maybe one handicap stall, which would be further down, and there'd be less of a problem if a car pulled in off of Furnace. On the other hand, I do feel this is a very dangerous corner. I mean, I've been one of the people that have often pulled out and then stopped because you just can't see, and I understand that. And I understand that anybody who's coming from the west doesn't realize you have to almost pull out to see. So there could be cars swerving around you. I also agree that if we're going to do this, if we would pass this tonight, then I would say Century Link's lot has to be closed now, not in 2020. Because otherwise, people will just go into the Century Link lot and go onto Furnace Street that way. I'm assuming, Howard, we would, at the very least, we're just putting up a "do not enter" sign at the intersection if we say it's a one-way street, that that's about all we would do in 2019 then, or?
Unless you vote for the additional work to be done.
In which case, I would suggest that maybe we come back. If that's the direction the council wants to go, that we come back with some funding options for you with respect to how to pay, the better estimates of those improvements and how we would anticipate paying for them?
And yes, I agree, one-way streets can be frustrating for people. But in this case, I do feel this is just a dangerous intersection. And I think, quite frankly, we're fortunate, no one's been more seriously injured. And I know there have been some serious injuries. So I would, I would make the motion that we approve ordinance 1906 amending the official traffic map to install, whoops, sorry, wrong one. If I can get to my right page. I move approve ordinance 1908 making Bonson Street between Furnace Street and Market Street one-way southbound and establishing one-angle parking stall at the far south end of this one-way street, which could be handicapped accessible then. With no parking between 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM with at least the one stall as a handicap parking. And also that the entrance to the Century Link parking lot be closed. And that we do have an estimate from staff for the cost of the changes. The landscaping, yes, that would be part of what we would be getting some information from the staff for.
So as I understand this, you're making the motion to adopt this without knowing the cost?
Yes.
Can I?
But that I would like to.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'd second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to adopt this ordinance, including closing a curb cut and putting in landscaping, and we have no cost for that, and we don't have an implementation to it?
And one angled.
And one angled parking space. Robin?
Yeah, I'm wondering about the not-so-beautiful-but-yellow curb, just like speed bumps that you lay down? They may look like, where you park up against those stops. Could you lay something like that across that temporarily? Or put up some sort of barricade in the parking lot if we decide we have no money? But, sorry?
I would be working with Century Link on a number of different options. If you pass the motion to close that driveway, as stated, I will work with Century Link on low-cost options at first that we can implement right away.
And my understanding is that the one-way is contingent on closure and landscaping. Is that correct? So you can't close it and make it one-way until the landscaping and the curb cut are taken care of? That's all, it's all one contingency. So it's not like you can make a one-way street and then we'll try to figure out the rest of it. So I, the way I hear Eileen's motion is adopt the ordinance contingent on, one way.
On the rest.
Contingent on, and so they all have to happen at the same time.
Well, I have another question. I do hear the complaint for the other street becoming a little bit more of a cut-through, and wondered if even that sort of suggestion of a barricade, not a barricade, but a speed bump at the end of that road would help reduce that sort of thing? What is the normal procedure, Howard, to discourage people from going the wrong way? Aside from a sign? Because I think as everybody gets to know it, they're going to see past the signs a little bit.
Now, those are, those are private. And so I would have to have discussions with the private property owners on what may or may not be appropriate. And I don't have any guidance. I mean, if that's what the council's guidance is, I can certainly enter into those discussions with them. I don't know.
It would be one thing for us to remove signage. It's not typical for us to actually make improvements to private lots.
But they were also just asking for recommendations?
Yeah, we can certainly discuss recommendations.
Time to problem solve. But is removing a stop sign necessary? I guess in that situation, I thought your parking lots would still need signage for the park, for stopping, but street sign, I understand.
I would, I will look into this. I will look into this as directed by the council to see what options are available and what we can do based on the comments made by Mr. Kloster. I'm not comfortable saying exactly what we would do in each case just yet.
I do have a question for the police chief. I assume that the police chief is the one that would answer it. If I own, well, I own the church, but I'm, there's a, there's a private parking lot between the church and the auxiliary building. And if somebody is going wrong, the wrong way through that parking lot, is that a sightable offense? Can you cite people who are going the wrong way in a private parking lot?
We do not cite for those offenses. There's a limited number of offenses that we can cite for in private lots to include no valid driver's license and O N V I, but not for the.
Okay, so if people started to use these two parking lots as cut-throughs, there's really no legal?
It would depend on where they entered back onto the street. I mean, if they were truly past the end of the one-way. I mean, it.
No, I mean, if I'm going, if I'm going the wrong way through the parking lot between 150 and 190 Market Street, angles are this way, but if I decide to drive through, and that's not a, that's not a, since it's a private parking lot, you can't cite for my passing through these parking lots in the wrong direction.
Correct.
All right. I think it's important that the people in these, that people understand that. You can cite for going the wrong way on Bonson Street. If I went the wrong way on that, because that's a public street. But you can't cite for going the wrong way through these parking lots.
Or a private driveway or something of that nature.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion on the table with a second from Isaac. So the motion is to approve this ordinance making Bonson Street between Furnace and Market one-way southbound, establishing one-angle parking stall for handicap, indicating no parking between 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM, and that only happens contingent on and at the same time that the curb cut is closed on Cent, into Century Link from Bonson Street, and there's some kind of landscaping barrier on, in, on Bonson Street, in what used to be the northbound lane. Are we clear on the motion?
I have one more question. If we are not trying to fit three parking spots in there, do we prefer angle? Or would it matter if it was angle or not? You said one angled parking spot, correct?
I do, yeah.
Would it be easier or take up more space or make more sense for it to not be angled? Does it matter? Do we take out?
I'll look at it, but my thought was that that would also be a visual indicator of, to, you know, for people to know that that's a one-way street. You know, if you've got a car parked in an angle in front of you as you're driving northbound on Bonson, it's kind of a ready-made clue. If somebody's parked parallel to the curb, somebody might think, well, they're just parked on the wrong side of the street. But that's.
Got it. Okay, any other questions? If not, are we ready to vote? Candace?
Sherp?
Yes.
Dos?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on on the next item on our agenda. I think we're done with, we have one more action item tonight, and that is Resolution 1911 regarding successive appointments to the Commission on Aging. Candace?
So the members of the Commission on Aging are currently required to allow one year to pass between each term served, a term is three years, before they're re, for they're eligible for reappointment. At times, this proves to be problematic, and it's difficult for the commission to find members. It would be an asset to the commission to be able to keep members longer. They are requesting to allow members to be able to serve two terms consecutively, so six years, before they would be required to take one year off. If a commission member should have to serve a partial term, this will not be counted towards the two terms. This change from one term to two terms would make the provisions for serving on the Commission on Aging consistent with a handful of other ones that have already moved forward with this, Airport Commission, Freud &amp; Rich Animal Care Trust Fund, Historic Preservation Commission, and the Housing Authority Board. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
And the resolution was not in your packet, but was on the table tonight? The draft Resolution 1911 regarding successive appointments to the Commission on Aging. This really allows people to serve six years before they have to take a year off, instead of three years off, three years off, three years off. Questions? I hear any action?
I move to approve Resolution 1911 regarding successive appointments to the Commission on Aging.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken Killian, seconded by Isaac Shanley to approve Resolution 1911. We'll vote.
Sherp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on now to the information and discussion part of the agenda. And the first item on that is annexation and rezone of 275 West Business Highway 151. Joe?
Yes. So the Chamber of Commerce has submitted a petition for annexation of a portion of their property, 275 West Business Highway 151. The Chamber's property actually is, consists of two parcels. One is in the city of Platteville, and the other's in the town of Platteville. So they're just kind of basically looking to clean up that discrepancy there. The portion that's in the town of Platteville is just over two acres. It does have frontage on Business Highway 151. It's got, it's contiguous to, on two sides to the municipal boundaries. Basically, the portion where the Chamber office is located is in the city, and the Katie's Garden portion is in the township. So this would bring all the property into the city of Platteville. Since it's a direct annexation by unanimous approval, there's, basically, the ownership is only one person or one property ownership, but by the Chamber, there's no resonance of that. It's a very straightforward annexation request. Normally, we don't even need to do a public hearing for this type of situation. But to make things easier, we're also recommending changing the zoning at the same time. The other alternative is you do a temporary zoning, and then you come back later and do a formal zoning. It's just an additional step. So the other Chamber property that's in the city is owned B3 Highway Business, as well as most of the properties along that section of Business Highway 151. So the proposal is to zone this property B3 Highway Business as well. So this will be a public hearing at the next meeting, basically because of the zoning portion of it. Any questions?
I guess I would just add that we requested that the Chamber make this change so that we could execute a grant that we had received from the DNR to do some work along the Roundtree branch there to address some soil erosion issues.
Okay, any questions on this?
Any objections from the township for losing some ground?
No, and the adjacent property owner was at the plan commission meeting and had no concerns or questions or anything either, so. Any other questions about this annexation? If not, then we'll be having a public hearing on it next meeting. We'll move on to B Land Sale Lot 46 of Platteville Industry Park. Joe, are you handling this?
I will start it, and then Eila's here to back me up if needed. Pedic and the city staff have been working with a prospect that's interested in locating in the industry park. They're looking at acquiring Lot 46 within the newest part of the park, Park Number 7. So it's on the northeast corner of Vision Drive and Phillips Road. So the purchaser would be Faili Properties LLC. So that's basically the family-owned entity that would purchase and own the property, and it would be used by IWI Motor Parts, which is an auto parts distribution business, also owned by the family. But they would construct a 10,000-square-foot building on that property. Building has an estimated value of $600,000. They are proposing to employ four people at that location. As I mentioned, it's a distribution of auto parts. So they supply auto parts to mechanics, dealerships, other entities in the area. So it's not really tended to be a direct sale, consumer sale. It's a distribution-type business. They're based out of Dubuque. They have other similar buildings kind of throughout the eastern Iowa, northwestern Illinois, and southwest Wisconsin. So basically, it's, for them, it's all about customer service, getting the parts to the client as soon as possible. So the location would definitely improve that situation for them. So according to land price formula, they would qualify for the reduced price of a dollar an acre if they proceed with the construction as anticipated. Pedic has not formally made a recommendation at this time. They had issue with the quorum, so they will be bringing a formal recommendation prior to the council meeting on the 23rd. Any questions?
Questions?
What'll be the taxes on this property?
I do not know the answer to that question. Eila, did you have an estimate? Ela, did you have an estimate on that?
Ela, if you're going to speak. Hello, folks. Ela Cockade, Paydeck, Platteville Industry Park. Um, so they're looking at a 600,000-square-foot building. We're look, estimating about 70% of, um, assessed value, so, um, that'd be about $420,000. And so if you do $23 per a thousand, and I think $7 of that comes to the city, what directly comes to the city, comes to about $3,000.
Because it's in a TID district, uh, it would, I'll, I'll go to the TID district.
Correct. And it would be our first construction in the new portion of our industry park, which is what we'd like to do. I did chat with folks that work there, and they enjoy working there. They like to daylight their buildings very nicely. They are talking about putting solar panels in there. The people that do work there say it's nicely ventilated. It's an enjoyable company to work for. So they have a pretty consistent, uh, workforce that seems pleased to be working there.
Other questions? Okay, so that will be on the agenda for our next meeting.
Yes, and Paydeck will be meeting tomorrow to have that discussion and provide some formal feedback for the 23rd.
Great. Okay, next on the agenda is the Legion Park Events Center funding. And, uh, I believe Karen will start. Is that correct?
I, I will. Um, as the council's already, uh, aware, back in 2018, as part of our CIP, the council had approved a $50,000 challenge, uh, to address, uh, the art hall in Legion Park, uh, a fairly dilapidated structure. We did have a group of, uh, citizens come forward to, uh, form a committee, uh, to take this project on. And, um, they decided that, um, uh, it would be in the best interest to actually build a new facility. And had put together plans for a new 6,000-square-foot event center. Uh, you've already seen those plans, as has the planning commission. Uh, the estimated cost to build sort of the base building for the event center is, uh, about $792,000. Um, this is slightly higher than the original estimates, uh, that, that were shared, um, largely due to the fact that originally we were just looking at the building alone and hadn't factored in costs related to, uh, prepping the site, um, s- addressing stormwater issues. And then we did find out that the building would need debris sprinkled, uh, because of the, the nature of the facility. Uh, with, uh, some add-on amenities such as epoxy floors, stonework in the front of the building, and a, a divider wall to, to divide the facility into two rooms, uh, the cost would actually go up to about $931,000. And these numbers may change slightly because, uh, there were a few estimates still coming into Delta 3 when I wrote this staff report. So it is possible that when you see the, the next version of the staff report, that, that they'll be adjusted slightly. Uh, to make sure that, uh, the committee is able to begin construction after Dairy Days, which is their plan, um, they are requesting $100,000, uh, from the city to supplement the $735,000 that they have already raised. Um, the $700,000 then would ensure that they would have enough funds to be able to, uh, to, to sign the contract for the base building and would start to fund some of those additional amenities. The committee intends to continue fundraising and is hopeful that they can fundraise the entire amount. If, if they're able to do that and/or to exceed, uh, the, the, or, and/or to reach the, the total cost with all the amenities, then the amount that they actually would request or take from the city would be reduced accordingly. Uh, staff is, uh, in favor of this proposal, um, and is, uh, recommending that $50,000 from the requests come from park impact fees. Those are monies that are collected when new projects occur in town. And, uh, they, they have a timeframe on them, so you need to use those funds within a certain time period. If we were to use $50,000, we would still have the, over $35,000 remaining in our park impact fee account. Uh, staff is also recommending that the other half, uh, come, the other $50,000 come from the Orla Clayton Trust Fund. Um, and if that were used, the remaining spendable fund balance would be approximately $108,000. We also have another $158,000 that is set aside in an endowment count that, uh, the city just, uh, uses interest earned from to make improvements in, in Legion and Smith Parks. Um, I really have to take a moment. Uh, the committee chair here, Sherry Inglekey, is with us. And Sherry and the committee have just done a phenomenal job in really raising, uh, the, uh, significant amount of these funds in a really short period of time. The community response has been tremendous and, but we owe a great deal of gratitude to the, the hard work by this, the private fundraising group. And all of the people that have made contributions to date. And it's not too late to make a contribution. And Sherry's, uh, here, uh, eh, to say a few words or if you have any questions.
Sherry, do you wanna, yeah, you'd have to come to the microphone.
I guess, uh, you know, I'll take any questions, but one thing that I wanna...
Sherry, you have to introduce, you have to say your name and then your address for the record. So it's...
Sherry Inglekey, 4397 County D, Platteville.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'll take any questions anybody has, but I do want to clear something up with the sprinkler. The reason we decided to go ahead and we, the choice we had was either cut the building in half or build it, and it would only be able to have food in it twice a month. So even Keeryan, Roasters, anything, it's not because of the kitchen. It's because of state laws and stuff. So we decided that to make the building very usable, we'd go ahead, and the sprinkler in itself is $62,000. So that was a big hit to our upcharge. The other thing I want to say, to date, the building is actually coming in at about 1.1 million. But $82,000 of in-kind donation has been taken, you know, given to us off of the, you know, the people, the, the contractors. So, um, that brings us down to the figures that Karen had, and they're coming in really close to that. I think we're really close to having the, the final numbers, I'm hoping, by the end of the week. And then we're gonna schedule a public meeting to inform everybody where we're at, show them pictures of the building, what we have. And, you know, I mean, at that point, there won't be a lot of changes to be able to make, but, um, you know, everybody will be on board. The other thing I want to say is that Mr. Brodbek volunteered to take our blueprints up to Kramer Brothers. And he had Kramer Brothers review them to make sure that we weren't, something wasn't gonna be wrong, or maybe overbuilding, or... And Kramer Brothers were very impressed with the plans that we had. They said that the city, that the building we were gonna donate to the city was gonna be a very well-built building. So they had no changes, other than they said we could probably do without the in-floor heat. But we really feel as a committee that was an important thing to put in the building because of long-term for the city cost savings. So I guess I can take any questions that anyone has.
I'll just comment on in-floor heat. I am so happy that there will be in-floor heat, because I was in a building the other day that had a cement floor, no in-floor heat. And I could have skated because it was humid and the floor had taken up water. And so, you know, people were just, so I think it will be a safer building because of the in-floor heat.
There's a couple additions. I will tell you, um, the audiovisual, um, we've had a person donate $10,000 of the $16,000. So we're putting in maybe more AV stuff to be able to use going down the road than what we originally planned because of that nice in-kind donation on top of it. And if we put it in behind the walls and wire it in, it's gonna be done right from the start. The other thing is, is we're gonna put my hearing loop in the floor. We have that as part of the initial building. Now, that's a two-stage where if we put the, in the floor to start with, the most, the part that makes it work is in stage two, and that's down further on our wish list. But it would be able to be added at any time. But if we don't put the parts in the floor to start with, it becomes harder to add that at a later point. So we're trying to look at all those things and, and prioritize, okay, this needs to go in the building, this doesn't, and where we're at. Um, the one thing I was surprised is Kramer, Kramer Brothers did recommend that we did the epoxy on the floor to start with, because it would save the city going down the road with resealing the cement and, um, the longevity of the floor. And they said that they thought the cement floor for a building like this was the way to go, not to go tile or anything else. So they thought we had made the right decision with that. So the epoxy is the first thing on our wish list after we get, and the second thing would be the room divider. And then we start down the wish list as we collect the funds.
What was the estimated cost of the stone on the building?
Um, that is way down the wish list. That is, half of it is 12/7. And I've got, I didn't bring, I got the cubic feet if you want. I mean, it, it's split-faced stone, and it's just around the front of the part of decorative stone.
And your divider wall, that's a movable divider wall, if I recall?
Yes, $40,000.
But that's something that, so if you want to use the entire building or just half the building?
Right. And that will be built, I feel we're gonna get that, that will go in there. That will be built, um, to be able to put in at a later date, because that's something that you can add very easily if we have the right structure in to put it in to start with. The other thing that updarted from our original cost is we are doing, um, cement block bathrooms, um, which we had the person from the parks, and everybody discussed that that was the best way to go with the lead, least amount of upkeep for the city. So that was another added cost. I think the masonry for them was about $13,000.
Referenced hearing loop. I don't know what that is. I'm, I'm curious.
So, um, Mike Mayer has a, it's wires that go in the floor, and I don't know a hundred, but people that have hearing loss and hearing aids, there's a, I think it, the wires on, you put the wires, they'll be in the cement floor. There's some kind of box that goes on the wall, and that's like $6,000. And I think a lot of churches and a lot of places are putting these in because it helps people with hearing loss. So they, I mean, hearing, that need, hearing, it, it helps with that. I'm, I'm not exactly sure, but we have had, like, the Quota Club come to us and brought it up, and they really wanted us to put this in there, because this was part of theirs. So the money that they donated almost pays for what the wiring is costing in the floor.
Maybe it was said, is this gonna be used year-round?
Yes.
Okay.
And it'll be air-conditioned, which originally the air-condition was optional. And then after much discussion, everyone felt that it should be put in to start with, so it will be air-conditioned. It will also have, both ends will have, like, overhead doors, so they can go up. So if it's a nice day, you'll be able to have it open, have a breeze through. And both ends are gonna have, like, a screen behind a barn door-like thing, so that if it's a nice day and you don't want bugs in there, you can shut the screens and have the airflow through without the air conditioning to keep it economical. And I did find out tonight, as I was going through numbers, we do have an extra $5,000 or $6,000 in the electrical, which I thought was gonna be an option later, but it's already in the numbers to put, like, the old barn lights on the outside and to have the cupillos litted. So we could take that $5,000 or $6,000 off yet at this point. But that would be a really nice decorative detail to this building, and the extra lighting will make it really look nice. So that's an option, and I didn't know that that was anywhere in there when I was asking what that extra was gonna cost. And he said, oh, it's already in the electrical. So, um, Eastman Cartwright is building the building, and Ingersalls are doing the plumbing and heating. And right now, um, Vince Graney is doing the electrical, but we're trying to see if he maybe can work with another electrician and they dual-do it. Um, Digmans are doing the cement. So everything is being done, local contractors.
No, I don't have any questions. It's, it's just really exciting. Looking forward to, uh, first shovel on the ground. Great. Thank you, Sherry. Thank you, Karen, and thank you, Luke. I know you've all been working on this diligently. So, uh, I believe that that is the last item on our, um, agenda for tonight's televised or videoed or whatever we do it. We are going to have a work session now, uh, and so, uh, we'll, we'll be done here at the table and, uh, go to our work session, work session on the transition plan. Uh, probably, as I say we're going to work on a tran- transition plan, I should, uh, tell people, uh, rather reluctantly, that the transition plan involves the departure of our city manager, um, who we're sad to lose at this point. So, uh, but that would be what we're talking about, so, thank you.